We're gonna have the page of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father of heaven, grateful for the day that you have given to us, grateful for the love and the grace that you have shown us this day. And Lord, we pray for our folks who are out restoring power, working, pray, Lord, for their protection. I pray, Lord, that soon our citizens will be back restored power. But, Lord, we pray that you'd watch over and care for our workers. And, Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for giving us a good place to live and to work and to raise our families. Thank you, Lord, for our city. And, Lord, as we take care of the business of the city, help us to do it according to your will, for we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pray for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. We're gonna start with our clerk. It's Ms. Pyeira Wilson is gonna do roll call for us.
Town of Vidalia Board of Aldermen Roll Call for the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen dated May 9, 2023. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Demby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Red.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show that I quorum is present in the county.
Okay. First thing on our agenda, we've gotta approve our minutes from our previous meeting. And is there any questions, any additions or deletions? If not, I'll here entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, or here's second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. This part of our meeting, we use that for public comment. If there's anything on an agenda item that you wanna talk about or mention, this would be a time to do it. I'm not saying that we wouldn't entertain more conversation as we got down into the agenda, but this is the time, if you really wanted to discuss and give an opinion on something on the agenda, when we do that. Is there anybody that wants to make any comment on any agenda items at this point? Okay. Well, we're gonna move on. But before we get started, with those on Facebook Live and for other things, we had a, this afternoon, we've had a tree go down on Concordia Avenue by the Upper Elementary. It took down a three-phase power line, and it took three poles. It broke them in half. So it's gonna be a pretty extensive repair. It's gonna be several hours. Citizens all the way from the levee on the north side of Carter Street will be out of power, all the way up to behind the Sonic back in those neighborhoods there will be out of power for several hours. I will, after this meeting, if you wanna stay on Facebook, I'll update you as the power crews update us. We have all hands on deck. All our utility crews are out there, and I promise you, there's not a better crew of men working out there than those guys. They're out there getting after it right now. I got a call from a lady that lives right across it, and before I could even call the department head to get started, they were en route. So that shows you how quick and efficient they are. I wanna thank them, pray for safety, because until you don't have power, you don't know what you don't appreciate, or water, gas. We really appreciate the work that those guys do, and really do it every day. So, and thank you, Lee. Lee, he showed up and cleared the tree out of the, out of the road, and got it all ready for those traffic, and they could get workers up and down the highway, up and down the road to get things fixed. Thank you, Lee, for doing that. All right. We're gonna start with our first thing on the agenda. It's Ms. Deborah Moke is our CPA and municipal accountant. She's gonna do our financial statement for March.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of March 31, 2023, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the nine months ending March 31, 2023, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 6.9 million, included restricted funds of 3.8 million in the hydro fund and 1.4 million in the sales tax fund. Investments include 9.7 million. The hydro reserve fund has 2.3 million. There's 1.5 million in the general fund. There's 705,000 of ARPA funds and 5 million of hydro funds invested in lamp. Total assets are 51.8 million. Total liabilities are 7.3 million. Fund balance is 44.6 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the nine months ending through March 31, 2023 indicates combined revenues of 34.2 million, total expenditures of 37.4 million, for a change in net position of a negative 3.2 million. At the end of March, revenues and expenses should be at or around 75% of budget. Overall, total revenues were at 67% of budget. Expenses were at 76% of budget. Transfers in and out were 138% of budget, and the change in net position was a negative 196% of budget. As approved by the board, debts of the town were paid off in January, including 4.5 million on the transmission line, 5.7 million on the municipal debt complex debt, and 561,000 on the fire truck. These debt payoffs are the reasons for the lower-than-expected net change in position. The budget has not been revised to reflect these more-approved changes. Revenues are lower than expected due to the lower hydro royalties caused by low levels in the Mississippi River and timing of the intergovernmental revenue, income, but are offset by the increase in sales tax revenue. Expenses are higher due somewhat by the cost of repairs to the conveyor belt at the port and cost of natural gas purchases have exceeded the budget by 553,000 in nine months. Capital outlay is at 59% of budget. Payoff of the fire truck has also increased expenses. We have received 408,000 insurance proceeds for the 411,000 total cost of damages to the port. Vehicle lease payments are beginning to show up in these financials. Overall, we have leased 45 vehicles through March. We do anticipate the lease payments for all the town vehicles to be around 35,000 to 40,000 per month. The town has received the 1.4 million of ARPA funds. From this amount, we have used 165,000 to help offset the citizens' electric costs for three months, and 63.9,000 to help supplement the employee retention payments in 2022. The remaining amount has not been approved, appropriated. Budget revisions will be necessary for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. The 2023-24 annual budget is being presented tonight to the aldermen and will be available for public inspection tomorrow. A vote will be taken at the next regularly scheduled meeting in June.
Okay. Any of the aldermen got a question of Ms. Moke?
I do. I have a question. So, I've kinda wrote some and jotted some notes down that I have pertaining to the budget. If you would let me say what I have to say, and then anybody that has anything pertaining to what I, my matters, they can come behind me. So, it's a question pertaining to the budget. Do we not have funds set aside for travel, registration, hotel for the mayor and the board of Aldermen? Do we not have something new, or do we have something new in place that was not approved by the board? I have been a member of the LMA for seven years since I've been elected, and I have never been told that I could not attend a meeting. Why now? What has brought this change on? I feel this is unjust, and the mayor's being prejudiced towards me. I have never had to call the mayor to say, Alderman Gardner, can you drive back forth or, or anything like that? I think this is just a slap in my face. The city owes me $352 for my last normal meeting for the LMA that was in Baton Rouge. If we are creating a new check and balance system for the, for this Alderman, I think we need to create a new check and balance system for all elected officials.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Number one, the alderman cannot call and request funds from employees and workers. He has to get permission. Alderman Gardner will not get permission and ask for permission before he goes these things. All the other aldermen do what is necessary to disperse these funds, and Alderman Gardner goes and travels and emails employees saying, sign me up for this, sign me up for that, without any approval from me. Now, the other aldermen have the decency to do and follow protocol. And until he does that, or asks the way he's supposed to, I'm the one that approves these things. You can't go and travel all over the place, and then come in and turn in expense tickets and expect to get paid. It's just that simple. You're gonna learn the protocol and the procedure.
This has never been the protocol and procedure. In the seven years that I have traveled to LMA for three meetings out of the year, I have never had to call you per se and talk to you directly pertaining to any of those meetings. That has never been a practice. And if that is something new, I should have received some type of email or something in writing stating that I'm not just the only one that has to do this procedure, and not saying that where it's in the handbook. Well, the handbook, that's for regular employees. That's not for the elected officials. And if we're gonna put something in place, we need to put it in place for everybody, not just me.
It's in place for everybody, and Alderman Gardner in the future, if you have travel you wanna do, I suggest you call me and get approval. Okay. That's all of that. And that's, that's the law. That's the way it's gonna be.
That's not how it's been going. And it's unjust and unfair that you owe me $352 for a LMA convention that I always travel to.
Did you call and get?
No, I did not, 'cause I have never had to do that.
And I'm waiting on a phone call.
I have never had to do that. I have never had to call.
Alderman Gardner, you're getting out of line.
No, I'm just being honest and telling the truth. You know, have I ever had to call you?
Yes, you have.
No, I have not. I have never spoke to you pertaining to any matter, pertaining to getting approval from you for any meeting that I have traveled out of town.
We're gonna move on.
Your personal vendettas against me.
I have no personal.
Your personal vendettas against me need to go out the door, because I have a job to do for my constituents and the people that I serve.
Your constituents.
And your personal opinion or feelings towards me and how you feel when it comes pertaining to doing the business for the city, that should be the most important thing, and not how you personally feel.
Yeah.
I have never, a practice has never been practiced in the past for me to call you and get permission. Normal practice is let your secretary know, let Jay or Pi know, and that goes from there. I have never had to do that. But like I stated and said, if there's a new practice in place, I don't mind doing it, but give me some kind of email or something, some formality of what needs to transpire and be done. I'm not saying I'm not willing to do it, but is every, every other alderman doing this practice, or is it just for me?
Alderman Gardner, would you say us on our policies and procedures in the alderment, you ought to know what those are. And that's all I'm gonna say. Let's move on. And yes, from now on, if you wanna get reimbursed for that, you come talk to me and tell me what you're gonna do and that you did.
Well, going forward, you're saying that's, that's how it's supposed to be handled, but you have never told me that.
Yeah, I have, but.
No, sir, you have not. We have not even talked in three and a half years. So when have you told me that?
And whose fault is that?
Well, we have not talked. So it goes both ways.
Okay. No, that's going your way. It just, anyway. Alderman Gardner, our town is better than this, than what you're putting out there.
No, I'm being honest, telling the truth. You owe me $352. You should pay me my money that I went to that meeting and followed.
You should call and get approved.
I've never had to do that. Why did you just start this now?
I'm moving on. I'm telling.
You've gone wrong, but we have never had that practice in place. I would not come to this meeting and lie on you.
Alderman Gardner.
I have no need to lie on you, Mayor Craft.
Yeah. Well, just read your Facebook post. There's lies up there. Okay, let's move on.
Everything you said, the truth.
Alderman Gardner, we're gonna move on.
So we can go where we really want to.
We are on, going to item two, on presentation of financial audit for the Town of Vidalia for fiscal year 2021-22. We have Mr. Scott Adams. Scott?
Sir.
And, and the work that, that our CPA, Ms. Moke makes and does year-round is fixing to be reflected in, in this, these financial controls, which our CPA did not find anything to do. And we're gonna make sure we follow those procedures and controls to keep things the way they're supposed to. Go ahead.
All right. Bear with me. I'm kinda losing my voice a little bit, but, so I'll try to keep this brief. But, yes, I'm Scott Adams with Silas Simmons. Just be, on behalf of our firm, we appreciate the opportunity to provide our services to the town. Like I said, with, with my voice going like this, I'm gonna try to keep it brief, but certainly, you know, I believe I brought the audit reports previously to another meeting, so hopefully y'all have had time to look at them. And if we need to have any further discussion than what I have to deliver, we can, we can certainly entertain any discussion. But we performed a financial statement audit for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. We're required to communicate that our responsibility is to come in and audit these financial statements. The financial statements are ultimately the responsibility of the board and the management you have in place here. We did conduct our audit, and I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It means that we do believe the financial statements are prepared, you know, without any material misstatements or any adjustments that need to be made to those financial statements as they are presented. So, obviously, that, that's, that's the good opinion. So, as part of our procedures, we also look at the internal controls that are related to the financial statement process. We don't necessarily look at every single internal control or every policy in place, but certainly anything that could affect the financial statements being free of misstatements. And I'm happy to report, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that are required to be reported as a finding or communicated to the board. So, obviously, another good thing. Another thing that we're required to do is, you know, we can't look at every state law or regulation, but again, we, we look at those that would impact the financial statements, or could lead to a misstatement in the financial statements. And I'm happy to report, in that area as well, we had no findings to report as part of our procedures. Just a quick rundown, I won't go through all the, the financial information. I know y'all are well into 23 at this point. But, you know, total assets at the end of the year were 97 million, up about 13 million from the prior year. Liability stood at about 21.4 million, which was down 1.6 million. The total net position stood right at about 75 million, which was up almost 13 million from the prior year. So, certainly, I would say that's, 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 that's a good thing. And then the final thing, a few years ago, the, in addition to the, the state laws and regulations we look at related to the financial statements, the state legislator, legislative auditor came in and said, in addition to that, we want you to, to do these additional procedures. It's roughly about 20 pages of additional procedures that we have to do. I have one exception to report from those procedures. In reviewing the sexual harassment portion of the handbook, in 2021, they, they changed revenue statute to include certain language about annual training in the, in the handbook. That was not present at the time. I believe that y'all did, have y'all passed the, I know I saw it several months ago, y'all had been discussing that, but I checked with Deborah and made sure that, you know, that was included in there. So, you know, this next go-around, I anticipate that'll be cleared up. But other than that, again, out of those 20 pages of procedures, no other exceptions to report, so.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Thanks.
Well, Scott, thank you so much, and y'all, y'all do thorough work. Those guys show up, several of them, they, they occupy the boardroom in there for several weeks.
Yeah, we camp out.
Yeah, they, they come in and they do a very thorough job, and I'm very proud of, you know, the, the grade and the, and the report that we've got. And it's just a testament to the clerks and the, and Deborah and her staff and all the people involved with keeping up with everything, so.
And I apologize. I usually like to comment on that. You know, obviously, Deborah is a huge help. She's our, our general point of contact as we get started. Of course, we have to go to different departments and work with other employees. You know, everyone's extremely helpful. You know, if we need something, we understand they need to get their job done, but they're timely in getting us what we request and what we ask for. So, y'all, y'all got some good, good people in place.
Okay. I don't think we have to have, entertain any kind of motion except the report, do we? Is that anything that, I don't think we do. No. Well, Scott, look, thank you so much. Again, if there's no questions from council, you, you're free to go unless you wanna stick around and listen.
I think I'm gonna go get some rest, but y'all have a good evening. If anybody has any questions, if you're getting deep into this thing.
Anybody that, if you're listening on Facebook, or if anybody wants this report, it's free of charge. Just let, get in touch with us. It'll be on our website. It's also filed with the legislative auditor, and it'll be there for your review if you, anybody wants to go and read it online, or it'll be there. So, and if you wanna come by here, we'll be glad to let you look through it or get you a copy if you want that. So, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Next thing we got, I'm gonna do a quick update on some of our town projects that we've got. There are several things here. We got Wynn Nettles here with us with Brian Hammond and Associates. He might talk on some of these things. We had meetings the other day, just getting updates. One of the things that they're, they're working on finishing, of course, on all the drainage product, I mean, projects, you know, there's several areas that haven't been resurfaced, and they're waiting to get everything completed and come in when we get some good weather. And they're gonna do all the resurfacing of all those areas at one time. So, if you're looking for, you know, going over those rough spots till we get that done, that's what we're waiting on, for the complete project to be, all the digging and all of the culverts put in place, good weather, and then they're gonna come and re-overlay all of those areas at one time. Is there any questions on the, the drainage issue? They're opening the bid, the street project, all the new streets, all of Alabama, up to Oak Street, from Riverside to Oak Street, Elm Street, the older part of Elm Street. We also have Peach Street and Myrtle Street gonna be overlaid, and I think there's one or two other little sections that's gonna be done. And they're gonna open bids, actually Thursday, I believe, for that, on that project. So, that will be getting started soon, as we get some good weather and come in. The, we're, then one of the next things that camo construction is gonna do is clean out our culverts under Logan Sewell. That's the main thing that drains our whole town. All that water's gotta go through there, and those, those culverts are probably, I would say, anywhere from 30 to 45% stopped up with, with mud and debris, and they're gonna clean those out. We're gonna make sure that we can, I know Alderman Smith had told me about some beaver dams behind the Alabama Street ditch back in that area. They've got three, there's three beaver dams. I walked it out and I saw three. That, we're gonna try to get the beavers trapped first and hopefully can get those broken up. We're moving ahead on our, completing our substation, the last leg of it. There, it's in design now with Brooks Harbor, and then that will be, once that's completed, we'll move on with that. That's gonna be probably anywhere from 12 months to 14 months out of having that other relay station hooked up. We're moving on with, we, we had a meeting. We're, we're discussing maybe taking the ARPA funds and raising our water wells. Cornelia, you wanna tell them what the department told us that we needed to do as far as our water wells, what's required of us?
Yeah. The water wells, we got to have it raised, 'cause we had our sanitary survey last year. They cited us for LHA deficiency. It's not at a significant rate, can be, but as long as we're moving ahead, what we're trying to do, get this alleviation, we'll be okay. But, yeah, we got to raise all three wells. We got to re, do all the power supply, our building power supply to the wells, just in case we do have a flood where, like we had in 2011. 'Cause, I mean, in 2011, when we had that deal, we just, y'all just didn't know how close we were if we'd be shut down without water. So, this is very important. Yeah, so, but anyway, but it'll be a great thing to get that done.
Okay. Thank you, Cornelia. And we, the next thing is the DOTD, the SLU funding. We met on that, and Jay talked a little bit with DOTD and a little bit today. Jay, you wanna tell them what, what status that is?
Mayor, we spoke with Shannon Dupont, who's the liaison for us on this project with DOTD. The contract for payments, this is a, this is a project that'll be 90% funded by DOTD for construction. So, the paperwork, contract for payment are in the legal services section, and then the contract services for review. They'll be forwarding that to the town, so the mayor can sign off on it. In the meantime, Hammond Engineering, I think they're working in McKee, and they're back down the, the engineering part of it. That's ongoing. That doesn't affect, and I can wait on this paperwork here. So, it's making progress.
And we have to submit a little more time for final plan and inspection review. They might have seen it, so this should go quicker, until we get in on the next two groups.
Okay. All right. The other thing I have is, Lorraine Scott is here with us. Lorraine, I'm happy to say she has really spearheaded this up, and it's called the Town of Vidalia Summer Feeding Program. Lorraine, you wanna come tell them a little bit about it, what it's gonna be?
Good evening, everyone. It's, it's the Healthy School Food Collaborative. And what it is, is the funding comes from the federal government, but they partner with local nonprofits. And so, the Town of Vidalia has, is working with the Healthy School Food Collaborative to deliver meals to children during the months of June and July. It's free of charge. They deliver the meals once a week, enough meals for two meals per day. And we're just acting as the liaison between the vendors and the nonprofits who actually deliver the meals to the children. They also have a program for seniors. We are working on that at, at the moment, to get meals delivered to seniors as well in the community. There is no background check or income requirement for it. We have the flyers that have been done. Hannah's gonna post these for us, and all they do is scan the code or click on the link, fill out the short form with their names and address, the names of the children in the household. It's, it's a place for at least 10 children on the form, and the meals will be housed at the convention center, but no distribution will be done there. The nonprofit will pick the meals up from the convention center and take them out to the homes, once the vendor delivers them. So, that's one of the projects that we have. And like I said, we're in the process of trying to get a similar program through this, similar funding for seniors in the community as well. And the other projects that we spoke about, we're still waiting on the Vidalia Safe Accessible Streets Project. It is in the reviewing stage. And also, we are working on the DA Big Lane Project with Hammond and Associates, so we hope to be submitting it soon as well. And the final thing that we have is, there is new funding available that was sent to me by Jessica Stroup with LSU Ag. It's the Safe Streets For All Initiative, and it's a means of acquiring funding to fill in the gaps. But you have to have a safe, a safety plan for the city, where we go out and we look at all the areas that need improvement, and you present a holistic approach, and then you can pinpoint funding to take care of each area, and you don't have to wait as long to get the monies in, if you already have the, the plan in place, because everything will fall under that umbrella. So, we have quite a few things in the works, and we just ask that you all pray and keep us uplifted, that we can get this money done and make Vidalia a safe place for all when it comes to accessibility and travel.
Okay. Thank you, Lorraine. I appreciate the work you done.
I have a question. My question is pertaining to the food, summer food program. Will it affect those that already, I know it's normally a summer feeding program already. So, these kids can still eat twice? They can eat from the original program and also eat from this one?
Yes, they can, they can still get the, the school lunch program.
Correct.
It is separate from this. This is strictly a nonprofit organization that I learned about when we were at the NLC conference, and this one is actually based out of New Orleans.
Okay.
And there are no requirements. Only thing is, the parent has to sign up, put the children's names, so it can be documented, and that documentation turned in to the federal government to show that these are the children that were serviced.
Okay. My second question is, can we reach out maybe to the school principals or something to get this out to the kids, to kinda go to them and make sure we, you know, get this?
We are. They're gonna be placed in the libraries. I put the flyers for you guys. The mayor and the city manager gave approval, wanting you all to see it today, and then we'll start distributing the flyers and place it out for public viewing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
These look like they're pretty decent meals. On breakfast, they got pancakes, fruit, muffins, and French toast for them for lunch. They have hamburgers on wheat buns, grilled cheese, barbecue riblet, and chicken nuggets, and other lunch options are corn dog, turkey sausage, mixed veggies and fruit. So, again, if anybody listens to that, you've got to sign your children up, and, and it's for children 18 and younger, and they will be delivered to your home. Again, like Lorraine stressed, they don't come to the convention center looking for it. She can't do that. There'll be people that will be delivering the meals. So, thank you again, Lorraine, for that. That's, that's really good.
Mayor, in the view of the projects, the drone flyover, our IP director, probably Paul, mentioning that, the thing's coming up for an meeting, just to let people be aware of it.
Yeah, yeah. Let, let the people be aware of it now. Bobby, go ahead and tell them what we're doing with that.
On the May 22, ULM University of Louisiana Monroe, we do a flyover of the city for all the, basically gonna photograph all the streets, utilities, such that. So, the day of May 22, you may see a drone flying over. It's gonna be the day of May twenty-second, you may see a drone flying over. It's gonna be everywhere.
Don't shoot. Don't shoot them.
Don't shoot, don't, so thank you.
But thank you. And one of the things you might say, well, how's that gonna benefit the town? If you have a disaster, and they, and FEMA, when they go and do these things, they're, they require us to show video evidence of where the damage was, and they want video evidence of what it looked like before and what it looked like after, and what we're doing, we're gonna have that and it'll be archived where we can keep it, and it would go with any kind of application in the future. If we have a disaster or a claim, we have all of our documentation to show what was done and get easier to get reimbursed, because that has been an issue. So, thank you, Bobby. I appreciate that. And I think that's all I'm gonna cover right now on our project update unless somebody has a question about something. So, we're gonna move on, and we're going to our board discussion vote on approval of occupational license. The first one we got is Rolling in the Dough. It's Hannah Grace Hinkle, and I think everybody is familiar with their business, and y'all wanna tell us a little bit about it? And I think she's got samples.
Hello. So, I'm Hannah Hinkle. So, Rolling in the Dough is a no-bake cookie dough business that I started when I was seventeen at the farmer's market over in Natchez, but we're now on the Vadaia side, so we're opening our shop back up again, and we're gonna have our cookie dough, full-blown coffee menu, pastries. It's gonna be a walk-in business as well as a drive-through, so a lot of cool things upcoming.
Well, great. Well, look, we appreciate y'all coming to Vadaia, and we feel like you're making a good move.
Us too, us too.
I think it's gonna be good, and anything we can do to help y'all, we really appreciate it. So, is there any questions of Ms. Hinkle? Do I hear motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Here's a second. Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Y'all be coming later with a sign?
As we have it.
It'll be on next Wednesday.
Is that, is that on there?
No. It's turned in today.
Oh, it's turned in today? Okay. So, we don't have it in our packet?
No.
Oh, I guess, you know, do y'all have a picture of it or anything with you now?
I do.
Huh? Can you make copies just one, so we won't have to come back?
We made copies for everybody.
Oh, you did? You got copies for everybody? Okay. All right. Do we have them yet?
No.
No, she said they...
Okay, if you would get them for us, just so we, you know, while we're here on that. Let's go ahead and talk about the Old South Trading Post, LLC. They're going to be moving into Virgil, a portion of Virgil's building. If y'all know going up Canal Street, the gift shop on the left there with all the balloons and flyers and things, that's, they're gonna be there. The river, American Cruise Lines coming there. They feel like that's a definite spot they wanna be, not only for that, but for travelers just coming in on that side of the river, a place to drop in and get some, you know, Louisiana trinkets, you know, to take back home with them. So, I've met with them. They're very sweet people. I think they're gonna do well, and I'd like to motion for us to accept that we approve them for occupational license.
Make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Here's a second. Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Ask your question, Mayor?
Sure.
Can she, does she sell on the riverfront? Are ships coming? Can she have a stand?
She'll have to, John will have to address that, and also we'd have to discuss, I mean, as far as with the Riverfront Authority, you know, what, what can be done on there legally as far as, you know, license to sell, you know, you know, because anybody could come in and set up a shop when...
Yeah.
And we, and, and my initial response, unless it's a storefront, I'd just hate for us to start having peddlers there, bugging the visitors, getting off the boat, you know, trying to get them to sell them something. I, I don't want us to, you know, just my initial gut reaction would be, I don't wanna, I don't want us to harass our visitors.
I didn't know if there was gonna be something done with...
But I would say this, any of our businesses in Vadaia that want to get with the cruise lines that's coming in to give them brochures on their businesses, what they have, where they can go, you'd be surprised at the people that might wanna drop by there and just, you know, if they know where it's at, and do, and get things. So, anyway, well, Ty should be back with that. We'll take a look at that and get, so y'all, because y'all are ready to, y'all are ready to start it, aren't you? Yesterday?
I'm ready for it.
Okay. Oh, and by the way, that's where, they're in the, where Steve and him just built the building. They're in the left-hand side of the...
Key. Yeah.
Okay. And y'all will have a drive-through?
Drive-through.
Okay, all right.
Where is it, Mayor?
It's by Weeks.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I was gonna answer the question.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, we can add. Let's, let's get...
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Of course, it would require unanimous vote, but let's, let's get it.
Okay.
For us to take it up, let's go ahead and have a vote to add an agenda item of approval, assign permit for Rolling in the Dough. Can her motion approve? A motion made by Alderman Betts. Here's a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. So, it is added to the agenda. Any questions?
That's good.
She's got her layout. That's nice.
Do you have any questions, Mayor?
Yeah, okay. Anybody got a question? Do I hear motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Here's a second. Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye. There we go. Good luck. Thank y'all again for choosing Vadaia. All right, good luck. Thank you. Okay, next thing we have is, this is a really good story. We have Mr. Bo Pilgrim and Mr. Charlie Hug with us from Reed Insurance. They are handling our workman's comp, and they have a little presentation for us tonight, and Bo, go ahead and tell us what you got for us.
Well, I got a check. I got, I got a big check. But first, I was gonna say is just, we've been doing the insurance for the town for several years since Buzz has been mayor, and really enjoyed working with the town. There's several different things the town has done that the common person doesn't know, because everybody's not quite as excited about the insurance as like me and Brent are. And, but you know, this is one of the things that we've done, is what we're gonna talk about here in a second. But another is the protection class rating that we have, too. Every now and then I see it again, and I stop for a minute and just think, I can't believe a town our size has that sort of protection class rating. But what it means is you pay way less than a typical town does for your insurance because of that rating. You know, Brent can attest to that. But a couple of other things that this administration has done is they brought the insurance back to Vadaia, so that we have that income that's being spent here in Vadaia. We're also working with the Workers Compensation Insurance Company, that is domicile in Louisiana, so it's keeping those dollars here. And also, we are partnering through the town with the specific company, Louisiana Workers Compensation Corporation, that then has a dividend program. Because the town has done such a great job at keeping their claims low, keeping it a safe workplace, you know, I'm happy to present that we've got a check for two-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars that we're giving to the Town of Vadaia.
Thank you. Let's get a, let's get a, let's get a picture. I'd like to ask the Alderman to come down front with Bo and Charlie. If we'd like, can we get a picture?
Yes.
You want the picture?
You gonna make it?
Did y'all, we got the check?
Yeah.
Send it out.
How do you leave a check, Brent?
I don't know how to check.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Oh, here it is.
Ma'am?
Certainly.
Is the Alderman now with us?
Yeah.
Two-hundred-twenty-two thousand, four-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
All right, here we go, guys. Ready? One, two, three. Say refund.
Refund.
Three, five.
All right, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
I got the insurance, but you're really no blame.
He's charging everybody else more so he can give that back.
Right. Now, I just charged one more.
What? Oh, goodness. Okay. Next thing we have is board discussion and vote on Vadaia Police Department personnel. Mark Davis going to a full-time narcotics officer. Any questions? Joey's here with us. Okay, here motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Here's a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next thing we do have is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Vadaia Louisiana zoning and development code and repeal the existing, currently existing...
Mayor, it's a correction on that. It's not, we're not repealing anything. So, it's just, we're just amending.
Okay, amending, okay. Strike, repealing, and just amending. Okay, so we're having a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Vadaia Louisiana zoning and development code from the existing current zoning code. So, we're going, here motion to go into public hearing?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Garner. Here's a second. Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye. We're in public hearing. So, before we do that, let me set the table with that before any discussion. Ms. Cassandra Lynch here. She's the president of our planning commission. Cassandra, you wanna tell us a little bit about y'all's process and what y'all did looking at this?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Cassandra, and I'm the chairperson for zoning and planning. And what a fun job it is. And the things that we were looking at was, we discovered we had some oops. Well, some old oops that we wanted to bring to y'all attention. The one was the rezoning of the track that said "commercial mix." There was only one section out of all of this area out here that was "commercial mix," and it really needed to be commercial, community commercial. There was just one little spot. Everything else around it, Walmart and Sprint, all of that is community commercial. So, we needed to fix that. So, we were asking that. We bring it to y'all attention, and then y'all take it from there. The second thing that we saw was it said that fuel pumps and canopies had to be in the front of the store, in front of the property. Well, when you drive from the foot of the bridge all the way through Vadaia, they already in front of there. Can, all the canopies are in the front, and all the fuel pumps are in the front. So, we asked that we correct that, too. And it said that the maximum size of a pole sign could only be thirty-two square feet. Well, that's kinda small. And as you grow older, it gets smaller. So, we said that the, and it said that the maximum should be at least two-hundred square feet. And the last thing we looked at was, it said that the lights should be only amber and white. Well, if you drive from the foot of the bridge all the way through Vadaia, they already green. We don't have not one white or amber light at any of the signs in Vadaia. So, we just wanna make sure that we make the right changes and be in compliance with what we say we're supposed to be doing. And we just wanted to bring it to your attention so that y'all can discuss it. And everyone on the planning and zoning committee was a hundred percent in agreement that we make these changes. So, thank you very much for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you very much, because I think that's well put, I think. Now, we also have here, we have Mr. John Thompson, who is the engineer for Race Track, and Scott Griffin with, who is the Race Track project manager, and I'd like to invite them to come up and...
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening. Yes, good evening. My name is John Thompson. I'm with the Plantus Design Group. I am the design engineer here to discuss with you today our proposed Raceway gas station development. On my left here is Mr. Scott Griffin. He is with Race Track, and he is here holding my sign. Thank you very much for holding that. Do apologize for that, but anyway, so yes, to recap, we are here for an official recommendation to change that zoning, and exactly for the reasons that she said, and this is really specific for what we're trying to go here. So, the current property, as she mentioned, is currently CMU, which is mixed commercial. To her point, this was the only piece of property that was that zoning. Everything else surrounding it was community commercial, such as Walmart and the Sprint Mart and everything there. We are simply trying to see if we can change that zoning to be consistent with the remainder of the zoning in your town, and we would certainly try to beat the character area, which is on the corridor of the highway. And a little bit about the project, right now, we have this conceptual site plan shown. The location is, it's currently an agriculture lot right across highway from Walmart. We are intending to basically extend the driveway connection immediately across from the Walmart Drive and add a fourth leg to that signal, and therefore you would have signalized intersection at the highway similar to the Walmart. We're also proposing another driveway further to the east, and we are in negotiations with DOTD right now about that driveway. But as you can see, this is the proposed layout for the store. What it consists of is a convenience store that is for Raceway, is thirty-five-hundred square foot in size. You've got the fueling pumps currently shown in the front. That was one of the issues of the ordinance. It had restricted you to be, I think, within twenty feet of the side. That does not allow for sufficient drive aisle space for you to circulate the canopy. So, we do appreciate that if you would recommend relief of that particular ordinance. Elsewhere, about the signage, like you said, trying to be consistent with your character area or the precedent that people have. You've got Walmart, Sprint Mart, Shell, decent-sized fuel price signs. All we're trying to ask is to be consistent with what's been established. And again, due to the coloring, as you mentioned, it is not, I'm not sure if anyone actually complied with that ordinance, but your typical fuel signage, red for gasoline, green for diesel, that is the national standards. That is for every state, and, you know, we certainly just trying to be consistent again with everything. One of the issues mentioned in the sign, and forgive me if we need to bring it up in the next agenda item, I'm not sure if I'm jumping ahead, let me know, but we did not officially ask about the sign height. And so, one of the ordinance requirement for the CMU zoning was restricted to thirty-two square foot. As you mentioned, that's not big. That's eight by four, roughly. We are asking for approximately two-hundred square feet, which again, much more consistent with in a line that Shell sign over there will probably be even smaller than that one. I don't know the dimensions, but in addition to the height increase, I mean, I'm sorry, the size increase, one of the things we forgot to ask about was the height. The current zoning restricts your pole signage to only twenty feet high. We are asking to get up to thirty-five feet, because to be honest with you, if you get a sign cabinet that's two-hundred square feet, it's only gonna be about yay-high off the ground, and it will be hard to see. So, that allowable increase in signage height would certainly be appreciated because it would just be more visible to motorists from the highway. And again, that is pretty consistent with what you basically have out there on the corridor right now. But anyway, back to this, so this is the current Race Track, I mean, I'm sorry, Raceway Gas Station for Race Track, sorry, that will be on this property at the location shown. This is our concept plan. I've got a couple of renderings. I presented to your planning commission, Scott, if you don't mind, I think the last few pages. But this is the architectural rendering of the proposed building as well as the fuel canopies. There, and so this would be your typical gas station fuel canopy. You've got the Raceway logo. It's blue and red with the white lettering. You guys may be familiar with Raceway and/or Race Track, but this is pretty consistent with what they have across their fleet. In the rear, on the side of the site, this is specifically a green diesel canopy. Again, this is a site that will have both regular fueling as well as diesel for your heavier trucks. That canopy signage is green for that reason. Similar to the price signage, the green is indicative of diesel, and that's simply, you know, what the architectural element of that is trying to convey. And then the last sheet, this is the prototype architectural rendering of your convenience store. You know, pretty modern, nice-looking building, if you ask me, but you know, you've got siding, gray coloring, the darker, and then you've got the Raceway logo with the big arch coming across the metal, and then you've got the, you know, on-the-go little signage like that, and then, you know, on the storefront all have, you know, food and that kind of offering, similar to your typical Race Tracks and Raceways.
I will say that y'all's newer stations, and I've been at them, they're... I will say that y'all's newer stations, and I've been in them, they're really nice. I mean, I think it's really a nice addition, the way, well, it's have like a food court in the middle of it like the, like some of the ones that I've seen.
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct, very many of them wrong. Raceway is simply just a smaller, more compact version, but they do have similar offerings for your food.
I can add a little bit to it. Raceway is a little bit different than the Race Track. Race Track's kind of standardized model all the way through our Race Track stores. Raceway is a franchisee, so be a member of the community that owns that franchise and employs anyone from 2015 to 20, hopefully local folks. It is up to them what they offer inside of it. Still standard convenience store, but when you go to a different Raceway in a different location, you may see different offerings, whereas Race Track, you'll see the same offerings everywhere.
Just add more flexibility with local food, right? Meaning, obviously, if there's local market, different brands, you know, they'll be selling that kind of material in the store. But thank you, Scott, clarifying that for me.
Okay.
Do appreciate your support and glad that you like all the gas stations. I've been doing race tracks for my whole life since I've been working, so this has been many years doing these, but do appreciate that, thank you.
They all look busy to me, so I thought, you know.
They draw them in, that's for sure.
Yeah. Well, thank y'all very much for bringing that here. We're still in public session, does anybody in, in public have any comments before we exit public, the public hearing? Anybody? Okay, I'm going to ask if we can exit public hearing.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Demby, Alderman Demby, do I hear second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Garner. All right, now we're going to go on to.
Here a moment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Number eight, board discussion, vote on an ordinance to amend the Vidalia Louisiana zoning and development code. Let's go ahead and take a motion, get a second, then we'll discuss it.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, here second.
I have a question, so are we only amending just that one particular thing or everything that she listed?
Everything that I mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, but anyway, motion made by Alderman Betts, here second.
I second.
Uh huh.
Let's get some more serious going.
Okay.
I think this time, you had the public hearing here, the board can change things as presented they listen to them, everybody said. So I would say that you want to also raise the maximum height of the pole sign, then you kind of first have to discuss what's supposed to be.
I thought that's what we was fixing to do, but anyway.
You understand, and then at some point, somebody will make a motion to say, well, I'm going to add so and so.
Okay, that's fine.
If you vote on that to add, you can vote on the whole thing.
Okay. But Chair, whatever pleases the council, I mean, we can, you want to discuss it before we make the motion, we can do that, if you want to. So I guess, is there anybody not in favor of things as the chairwoman mentioned from the planning and zoning commission, which they said that they all were 100% for that? Did you, did you not mention the height? I mean, did y'all not address the height?
We're not mentioning the height, that we need to.
They mentioned that.
That's correct, and that was not officially a part of planning and zoning recommendation because I did not mention it in that request. Subsequent to that meeting, it was brought to my attention, and that's why I brought it up.
Okay.
I don't know if I did the right procedure, that's why I apologize if I jumped ahead.
So I feel like we could, at this point, make, have, add to that of the recommendation of the planning commission to raise the height for this, for this one, for this instance, for this particular sign, or can we do it for just this one sign?
We're going to raise it to all the way.
Okay, all right.
I bet there's still any elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, the rest of them, all through towns, probably that tall or taller. So, any discussion on that? Does anybody want to add that to the, to the ordinance?
Sure.
Well, he made the motion, so you see that a motion on the floor, so.
Well, okay, but we haven't got a second yet. Then we can, then we can, then we can amend.
I'll second.
Okay, second made by Alderman Smith now. Motion on the floor, we've had discussion, do we want to amend the motion to add the height?
I'll amend my motion to include the.
Okay. Motion made, do I hear second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Smith. All right, any discussion? All right, let's go to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here we go, ready to go. Thank you, guys. All right. Okay, now we're going to have board discussion, vote on approval of bids for American Cruise Line bus turnaround. We have, you know, American Cruise Lines, they have several buses coming in now to offload their, their.
Mayor, mayor, you skipped an eye.
Pardon?
You skipped an eye.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, this is, yeah, a little bit. All right, introduction of an ordinance adopting the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Vidalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year 2023-24. This is not an action item, it's just the introduction of the budget ordinance that we will be discussing and bringing up over the next several weeks. And does anybody want a copy of that? Just get with our office, we'll be working some more with our, some of our aldermen to go over the budgets for this year before we actually bring it to a meeting. So anyway, that's just an introduction of the ordinance. Now, going to, item 10, board discussion, vote on approval of bids for American Cruise Line bus turnaround. So we're going to, we've got, we have what, three bids or two?
Looked like two.
Two. Y'all have them?
Yeah, looked like two.
All right, is there any questions on that?
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions on? This is going to allow those, those buses to get off the main road there and to offload and load passengers up. Okay, and the winner of the, for bids on town surplus vehicles, as y'all know, we've, we've received a bunch of vehicles through the enterprise rental program which y'all have been seeing and it's been approved, and now we have the excess vehicles, we have lists of them. I know that Joey's been in conversation with at least some of our local other law enforcement agencies, number one being Farity, the town of Farity. I think Pastor Botley, of Mayor Botley and Waterproof has requested maybe, looking at maybe a unit or two, but I wanted to find out if the council wants to entertain doing an intergovernmental agreement with those communities to maybe give them a car or two to help them with their policing in their respective communities. I, I hope that we do entertain that. We've been blessed as a town to be able to do what we do and keep our people and our officers and all of our, our public safety workers in, in very good equipment and safe. So Joey, would you like, I mean, who else, has anybody else reached out to you besides Farity and Police Chief King?
Clayton and Jonesville also.
Who's that?
Clayton.
Clayton and Jonesville? Okay. All right, have they requested a number of vehicles or?
They just, wherever they can get, they'll be grateful for it.
Okay. All right. And how was, now, what I would recommend that we do is put these out for bid and, and y'all go ahead and be thinking about what y'all want to do as far as maybe donating, not donating, but going into an intergovernmental agreement with these communities to get them some extra help on patrolling their streets. And a number of units y'all want to pick out for that? Y'all want, and then the rest of them we can put out for bid, with, subject to, we can deny any bids, you know, but we want to make sure that we can accept or reject any and all bids if they don't come in or something we feel like fair.
Mayor.
Uh huh.
I said board of members, I said in two years.
I wouldn't agree with that.
I was, I was thinking if, if the motion would be to allow, you know, the chief to enter into intergovernmental agreements with the local civil agencies, and then after that's accomplished, then put the rest of them up.
But we need to identify how many that is, is what I mean.
I mean, he can do as many intergovernmental agreements as he wants.
But I don't, I don't, I don't, every town in Louisiana and the Citi calling us up wanting to go to an agreement, what I'm, what I'm saying, I mean, I don't mean that in a bad way, I'm just meaning that I still think that I'd like to help our local communities out if we can. I, I think it's a big need, for sure.
I think this is a crazy argument, though.
So, I mean, any discussion from the council? What would y'all like to say? Our thoughts or ideas?
I definitely.
How many they want, Joey?
I'd like to help.
How many are they talking about in each place?
None of the places, I think there'd be more than one. I think Blair has any contact with more than I have, I'm not sure how many. Farity, who they think, they think, where they get, I think on the river shore, there. And Jonesville, they're not getting a number, but I'm sure they would be happy with one also. Nobody really said he's talking about more than one other than Farity. I'm not sure about what, but you talked.
Did they say, did Farity say two or three? I thought it was Sam, but he never gave me a number.
Yeah, they, they never told me a number. I'm, I'm sure like, they'd be grateful with one number.
I, I agree with council on letting Joey, you know, figure it out and do the intergovernmental agreement, and then whatever's left over.
Let them pick out the best one.
How much a car worth?
It varies, it varies.
That's what I was just. We only have, we actually only have a few that's going to be worth, uh, given, very few.
Jay, go ahead.
What, what we're looking at is, yeah, I know we got police department vehicles that you're thinking about, but we also have a number of street sanitation utility pickups that are probably not as mixed for the center government agency. So what we were planning to do is hopefully get the board to approve us to advertise for bids on surplus vehicles that we know we're going to sell. In the meantime, we'll get the enterprise, we've got, we've got information, they can get secondary market values in place for each vehicle we're going to put up for bids. So when we advertise for bids at the next meeting, at least on the street sanitation utility pickups, we'll have the bids ready to be opened, we'll have the board with a list of the approximate estimated values the enterprise came up. So as these bids are open, y'all have a good idea of, well, this, we got a bid in here with this secondary market value, this, y'all have a better option to say, well, we'll accept that bid or object if it comes in a period of. So we thought maybe with the street sanitation utility vehicles, they might be a separate batch from the police department until, until Chief Merrill can sort out which vehicle he might want to donate or work with another community. That, if that makes sense on, you know, that way y'all would have, y'all would have a good idea of what the vehicle's worth as opposed to when the car goes and bids up that.
And we can, we can either reject or, you know, or accept or reject them, so.
That's kind of what I was thinking about on these cars, see what kind of bids you get back and see which ones you, like, well, okay, let's.
I think the first thing we need to do is just get a count of who, how many they want. Joey, me and you will work on that and we'll try to get a good count, and how many we actually have that we feel comfortable maybe with them being safe, you know.
It's not what they mean, I could, I could give you that information.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So y'all want to make a motion to approve us to go that route? I think Jay pretty well outlined it pretty good.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Demby, do I hear second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Betts, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next thing we have is adjournment, here a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Demby, here second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Garner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.